The proclamation reads, "The city of Wichita, Kansas founded in 1870, whereas the city of Wichita encourages environmental stewardship and the creation of a more sustainable community by increasing the urban canopy, which is a more cost-effective way to combat urban heat islands. Whereas the global pandemic has increased in appreciation for trees and outdoor spaces to assist with the physical and mental health of our community. Whereas advocates say trees in the city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business districts, and beautify the community. Whereas the city of Wichita recognizes the daily benefits of trees and generational legacy of planting trees. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wichita City Council does hereby proclaim April 25, 2025 as Arbor Day in the city of Wichita and encourage all citizens to join in promoting the urban canopy by planting trees in your area of influence."
My name is John Bacon. I'm the arborist for the city of Wichita. First, I'd like to take a moment and invite representatives from ICT Trees to join us up here to receive this proclamation. ICT Trees has been an annual partner during our Arbor Day celebration, and we want to recognize them as well. It is an honor to stand before you today as we celebrate Arbor Day and all that the trees represent for our community and our world. I would like to begin by expressing my sincere gratitude to Mayor Wu and to the city council for this Arbor Day proclamation and for recognizing the critical role trees play in the health and well-being of our environment. Trees are more than just a part of our landscape. They are an essential resource that sustains life. They give us oxygen, reduce pollution, provide shelter to wildlife, and enhance the beauty of our neighborhoods. Today, as we come together to honor Arbor Day, we are also reminding ourselves of the responsibility that we have to protect and care for the natural world around us. The simple act of planting a tree is a powerful symbol of hope. It's a gesture to the commitment to the future, to a healthy environment, and to a sustainable world. It's about investing in the next generation by ensuring that they inherit a planet that is full of vibrant life like the one that we have today. I am incredibly proud of the efforts that our community has put into tree planting and conservation. From schools to local organizations like ICT Trees, to volunteers and environmental advocates, everyone has a role to play in making Arbor Day more than just a one-day event. It is about creating a lasting impact that will be felt for generations. As we continue to plant trees, let us remember that we are not just adding to the beauty of our landscape. We are creating a legacy, a living, breathing testament to our commitment to the earth and to all who share it. Thank you once again for this proclamation, and thank you to everyone who continues to make our community greener and more sustainable. Together, let's keep planting, growing, and nurturing the future. Thank you.
May please invite our council members who would like to be part of the Arbor Day proclamation. And as a quick reminder, we are unfortunately still in stage two of the drought, which means there are some water restrictions, and you can follow those restrictions at savewichitawater.com. May I please ask the U.S. Small Business Administration and its supporters to please come forward at this time? are the engine of the American economy and the foundation of a free and prosperous nation, built by men and women who work hard, take risks, and believe in the power of the American dream. Whereas small businesses make up more than 99% of all private sector employers and create nearly two out of every three new jobs in America, fueling opportunity and driving local economies across every corner of the country. Whereas in recent years, small business owners have faced unprecedented challenges from record-high inflation to reckless federal spending and burdensome regulations, yet have remained resilient in their commitment to delivering for America's communities. Whereas National Small Business Week has been proclaimed by the President of the United States since 1963, honoring the vital role of small business in creating jobs, growing the economy, and anchoring our communities. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wichita City Council does hereby proclaim May 4th through the 10th, 2025, as National Small Business Week in the city of Wichita, and encourage all citizens to support small business and celebrate their many achievements."
Good morning, and thank you Mayor Wu and members of city council. It's great to be with you this morning, certainly our city manager as well. We are honored to receive the proclamation from the city of Wichita to recognize National Small Business Week. And again, it is the first week of May. Every year since 1963, the president proclaims National Small Business Week, which recognizes the critical contributions of our nation's entrepreneurs, small business owners, and these individuals, they account for more than half of American jobs, either they own or work in a small business. And they create about two out of every new jobs in the country annually. So today, we're going to recognize the Kansas Small Business Persons of the Year. But before we get there, I'm joined today, and I'd like to introduce the Regional Administrator for SBA Region 7, the Great Plains Region, Mr. Bradley Zahn, or Brad Zahn. And by the way, he has a special connection to Wichita and our city manager. As Mr. Brad Zahn, at one time was the mayor of Urbandale, Iowa, and our own city manager was his city manager back in Iowa. So, Mr. Brad Zahn, SBA's Region 7 Regional Administrator.
Well, on a personal note, I want to thank the Mayor Wu for the warm welcome, and certainly got to meet a lot of the council. And I want the citizens of Wichita to know this. Bob Layton is the best city manager in the United States of America, and he has done some great things down here as well. So, but the real celebration today is our award winners, both Kang and Tuan, and their success story. And I'm very proud to be a part of this. On behalf of President Trump and Administrator Kelly Loeffler, I am here to be a part of this special day and congratulate you all. I appreciate everything you do as a small business person, matching social security for your employees. I've read a bio about your company and all you've done for the community, all the benefits you provide. So, this is the American dream, and I'm really, really excited to be here. So congratulations to you all. Thank you.
So now I want to recognize Mr. Kang Foo and Mr. Tuan Li of Quick Tech Manufacturing LLC. They are SBA's 2025 Kansas Small Business Persons of the Year. Let's give them a round of applause. So a little bit about the award. The business was evaluated on sales growth and employment, staying power, response to adversity, and contributions to the community. The nomination was submitted by Wayne Simmons, President of Frontier Financial Partners, a certified development company out of Emporia, Kansas. And I'd like to just take a second to recognize Wayne Simmons. Where are you, Wayne?
Right here.
All right. Good to see you. Thank you for being here. All right. So Mr. Foo and Mr. Li were selected among a competitive field of nominations. Here's a quick summary of their story. Tuan Li came to the U.S. in 1979 as a 14-year-old boy with his brother and sister after the Vietnam conflict. His parents were not able to immigrate with them. Tuan attended a technical college and went to work as a machinist. Kang Foo came to the U.S. from Vietnam in 1990. Tuan was one of those who greeted him, and he got off the plane as he got off the plane in Wichita. After graduating high school, Kang joined the Navy. Eventually, he returned to Kansas and worked with Tuan in a machine shop as a programmer. Tuan and Kang took a chance and started Quick Tech Machining LLC in 2008. Tuan shared this with us. He said, "I always said, if we work hard, do the right things, and live right, we'll get what we deserve, and we'll get what we get." After starting out in a 7,000-square-foot facility, the business outgrew its space pretty quickly. In 2013, the team obtained an SBA 504 loan to finance the purchase of a 28,000-square-foot facility. The company grew further in 2022 by adding another 39,000 square feet, and in 2024, they purchased a 40,000-square-foot facility. And that facility was intended for their processing plant operation. So, the SBA also, they utilized SBA, and SBA provided needed financial support. During the pandemic, they received a COVID-19 loan. And today, Quick Tech continues to grow. They actually have 115 employees. So, pretty amazing story, wonderful, wonderful small business success story. So, please join me in congratulating Mr. Kang Foo and Mr. Tuan Li, SBA's Kansas Small Business Persons of the Year. Do we have this award? You want to say anything about your business? Please?
Hello, my name is Kang Foo. I would like to say thank you to SBA for this incredible honor. This is not just for us, but for the amazing team at Quick Tech Machining, our supportive family and friends. Thank you, the city of Wichita, for allowing us here to chase our dreams. Thank you.
at this time. The proclamation reads, "The city of Wichita, Kansas founded in 1870, whereas the Fair Housing Act enacted on April 11, 1968, enshrined into federal law the goal of eliminating racial segregation and ending housing discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, familial status, national origin, and disability, and commits recipients of federal funding to affirmatively further fair housing in their communities. Whereas the city of Wichita is committed to the mission and intent of Congress to provide fair and equal housing opportunities for all, as our social fabric, the economy, health, and environment are strengthened through diverse and inclusive communities. Whereas acts of housing discrimination and barriers to equal housing opportunity are unacceptable to a common sense of decency and fairness. Whereas fair housing is integral to the ethical commitment of members of the Realtors of South Central Kansas and is critical to the ability of all housing professionals to serve their clients, customers, and communities. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wichita City Council does hereby proclaim April 2025 as Fair Housing Month in the city of Wichita, encouraging an inclusive community committed to fair housing and promoting appropriate activities by private and public entities intended to provide or advocate for equal housing opportunities for all."
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you Wichita City Council for the opportunity to be here today. I didn't bring my notes with me, but fortunately, I think that our huge amount of people here today speaks for us. As the Realtors of South Central Kansas and representatives, we are proud to be here, upholding and affirming our commitment to fair housing in Wichita and all the counties that we represent. Thank you so much.
providing a special recognition to a Wichitaan this morning. At this moment, can I also please ask JROTC and Cadet Neinhaus to come forward? Mr. and Mrs. Neinhaus? This is a special recognition for Cadet Aiden Neinhaus for performing a voluntary and heroic act. He assisted in saving the life of a woman who had fallen more than 30 feet at Canopolas Lake State Park. His swift and decisive actions were pivotal in ensuring her safety and well-being. Cadet Neinhaus's bravery and quick thinking reflect the core values of the JROTC program: integrity, responsibility, and commitment to service. His actions also exemplify the values that make our community strong, and he serves as an inspiration to others in Wichita and beyond. Congratulations, Cadet Aiden Neinhaus.
Just glad I could be here today. Thankful that the Lord put me at the right place at the right time. Thankful that he gave me my instructors and my parents to raise me upright and be able to take action quickly.
Would Colonel like to say a few words about JROTC?
Master Sergeant, but okay. Thanks for the promotion. I'll take the pay with that, but not necessarily the responsibility. I'm Master Sergeant Eric Agar. I'm the aerospace science instructor on behalf of Wichita JRC. JRC is a citizenship leadership course. We do not recruit for the military. Our goal, our mission is develop citizens of character, and we do that in many different ways. We have many activities, and Cadet Neinhaus is an epitome of the goal of JRC. He has a strong foundation with his parents, and we just hopefully add a little bit to that. So, thank you for the recognition, Mayor Wu. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, can you please call the next item?
Public agenda. The public agenda allows for up to five speakers to have five minutes each to address the council. No action will be taken relative to items on the public agenda, other than referral to the city manager for information as necessary. Speakers will please state their name and address for the record. A time clock will display the speaker's remaining time to speak. Order and rules of decorum will be observed. The first speaker is Arthur Stokes, advocating for black mold.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Arthur Stokes, and I'm Wes Lefebvre. I'm glad to have the opportunity to speak to you all this morning on the topic of black mold. If I would have had to speak last week at this time, I wouldn't have been able to do it because I had to go to the emergency room about 8:00 that morning. My stomach started killing me, and when it get like that, you know, I just go to the emergency room. I'm on the talk about black mold and symptoms that deals with it. This is a very vast, sophisticated topic, you know. I'm dealing with public housing. The topic of the starchy boxus, which is more or less microtoxins in dealing with mold is a very complex. Everybody, immune system in here is different. Mine is different. Soon as this stuff starts operating, I mean, the last time I immediately started having vertigo that morning, that night, so I was at the emergency room twice. It's kind of like, it's kind of like when you take a mushroom. You ever watched a mushroom grow, and it keeps growing and growing and growing? And that's how mold, black mold operates. It keeps growing. I had like 17.5% central intoxicant that laboratory found in my system. At my last dwelling, and 16% okra toxins is where I'm at now. That's a very high volume. That's why it operates on me a lot differently than it would y'all. I'm an ex-athlete also, too. See, I played O.J. Simpson's protege Tyrone Young back in Florida for our inner-city Who's Who. So my system is going to operate different, but it still operates on your immune system as it continuously to grow. And here is some of the items that I had to get, and I had to pay for a doctor, the medicine, these kits. This kit cost me like $700, just this stuff here with the little cylinder that I use to operate this stuff. And this powder, it wasn't as good as it is now. The first batch was so gross, but I had to take it to try to get well. And it came with this little syringe, and it had like a little pump that I put the liquid in, and after about six times, the pump quit on me. I don't have the pump because I think I threw it away. I mean, you know, when this life or death for me in trying to get well, and that pump stopped operating, you know, it even quit penetrating in my nose. So, this is, all I can say is, I researched some of the people, like Ed McManon, the Ballard family, they had like a $4 million lawsuit. This stuff just gets expensive, you know. There is like seven families. One family was awarded like $48 million. I got this stuff right out of the internet, so all of you can, you know, research it and do more. This is just so vast of a topic for me to talk about. Comments, thoughts, questions?
Thank you, Arthur. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Stokes. I really do appreciate you pursuing and sticking on this issue because it is a very important one. We are drawing up some ordinances right now that will crack down a little more. Here in a sec, maybe I'll see if our city, or Assistant City Manager can give an update as far as we are with the timeline. Some of these issues also, especially getting into some of these units to inspect, we are kind of handcuffed by some state regulations as well. And we've been working with some of our state legislatures to try and find some workarounds and some improved legislation. So, that's another topic I would like to discuss with you, is how we So, that's another topic I would like to discuss with you is how we can advocate to the state as far as being able to get in and inspect a lot of these units.
Sweet.
Yeah. Troy, can we get a, maybe just a timeline as far as any of the new ordinances, what we're looking at here?
Councilmember Hoheisel, Troy Anderson. Yes, in fact, we're working through the process right now. You may recall a workshop we had about a year or so ago. We're in the process right now of making amendments, coming up with a draft ordinance. We're actually going to have a workshop next month, bringing back to you all what that draft ordinance looks like. Talk to you about some policies or decisions and guidance that you can then help us finalize, where we need to go with some of those revisions. We'll come alongside that with kind of an overhaul of our policy procedures, standard operating procedures in regards to enforcement around those codes and ordinances, but look to see a workshop as soon as next month.
So, end of next month, Mr. Stokes, I'll make sure, I do have your email. I'll make sure to shoot you an email with the time and date of that workshop. And if you'd like to attend, we don't usually open it up to the public. But at least get informed and then chat with us afterwards and see what your thoughts are pertaining to some of the proposed ordinances that we have.
All right. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, sir.
All right.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Councilmember Hoheisel stole everything I was going to say. So, I'll just say that I appreciate you continuing to come up here and talk about this issue. It's something that we continue to hear about. And like Councilmember Hoheisel said, we'll definitely be looking to have the discussion and hopefully take some action to address that. There's too many people being impacted by black mold, and some of us have seen that in person. And I always tell the story about Councilmember Ballard and I going to an apartment complex and that lady having to go to the emergency room again because of black mold after we had left. So, we have to do something. It's not fair for people to be living in conditions like that, and we intend to have that discussion and take some action. That's not right either, so we got a lot of work to do.
Mr. Clerk, please call the next individual.
Chief E.S. Lewis, Negative Culture, Negative Behavior.
Peace be with you. The Holy Kingdom of Judah extends gratitude and respect to the city of Wichita, its city officials, and this honorable council. Never has there been such a horrific chapter in human history as the triangular trade, which involved the forced transportation of millions of Judaites across the Atlantic Ocean to the Americas for enslavement, primarily by Masonic America. The triangular slave trade which victimized the Royal House of Judah has been declared a crime against humanity. Therefore, the Holy Kingdom of Judah is entitled to the recognition of our sovereignty, restoration of our kingdom, and the right to self-determination. The Holy Kingdom of Judah commends the great city of Wichita for recognizing these truths and establishing the City of Wichita Judah Restoration Committee. The American government must continue to take steps to create and protect, to restore and protect the Holy Kingdom of Judah's identity and reputation, our tribe's national identity, and the respected commands are crucial for fostering unity, promoting social cohesion, and facilitating international relations, ultimately contributing to our tribe's stability and well-being. During the triangular trade, the Royal House of Judah's majestic identity was intentionally removed by bad actors and replaced by false defamatory identifiers. The most utilized of these defamatory identifiers include black, negro, and the N-word. The word black means unholy, ungodly, evil, wicked. To blacken and to blacken means to defame. Defamation is not constitutionally protected and may lead to both civil and/or criminal charges. Many expert linguists across the country are now of the same opinion. Black, negro, and the N-word as identifiers defame the reputation of the Holy Kingdom of Judah. Expert linguists are utilized by judges for language interpretation, text analysis, and forensic linguistics to provide specialized knowledge and insights that aid in legal decision-making. One such expert with over 40 years of judicial service writes in an official report, "Judaites did not speak Latin, Portuguese, or Spanish and would not have utilized negro to self-identify." The doctor goes on to state, "It is my expert opinion that the use of black, negro, and the N-word when describing a Judaite is not only highly offensive and not used by Judaites when describing themselves, but in this case inaccurate." Are black, negro, and the N-word also defamatory against the Holy Kingdom of Judah? Law.com defines defamation in part as follows: "The act of making untrue statements about another which damages his/her reputation. If the defamatory statement is printed or broadcast over the media, it is libel, and if only oral, it is slander." This may apply to black, negro, and the N-word when describing a Judaite. These words are imposed names, not statements, but their use or their use in statements may convey or perpetuate contempt, hatred, ridicule, oblique, or scorn in a respectable and considerable part of the community, thus would be considered a defamation of the Holy Kingdom of Judah's reputation. The Holy Kingdom of Judah requests this city council establish a resolution banning the N-word in all its forms within the full reach of its jurisdiction. The Holy Kingdom of Judah will continue to work with local, state, and federal governments to rectify the wrongs perpetrated against our tribe so that Judah may be fully reestablished and so that America may finally heal and its reputation as a nation of law, justice, and freedom be restored. Thank you for your time and attention. Peace be with you.
Thank you, Chief Lewis. I agree with you that the N-word should be banned, but unfortunately, we do have the ability to have free speech, and so we cannot do a resolution regarding that.
Okay. Well, I'd say defamation is not covered by, constitutionally protected by the Constitution. That's still defamation, so peace be with you.
Be with you. Mr. Clerk, can you please call the next item or next individual?
Janet Johnson, City Council, Nonpartisan Body.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. Janet Johnson, 523 West Carlyle, District 3. The Wichita City Council, as a nonpartisan body, is the last bastion of hope for residents who expect their elected officials to listen and to vote for what is best for their districts and the city as a whole. And now, like many other traditions, it has fallen under attack. As a woman, I am watching my rights as a United States citizen being removed one by one. And these are rights that our mothers, our grandmothers, and beyond fought for. Women were not granted the same rights as men, or I should say white men, because our brothers and sisters of color had to fight for these same rights and more. Women have had to fight for the right to vote, to own property in our own name, to have a bank account and a line of credit in our own name, to file for divorce, to have a shot at gaining meaningful employment in a good old boy world, to receive equal pay for equal work, and to make our own medical choices and have control over our reproductive rights. These rights were not automatically given to us. The women who came before us had to fight for them, and each victory was a hard-fought hallelujah. Today, we are seeing the rights that we fought for taken away. The federal government has removed opportunities for equal employment. The state continues to try to take away our medical rights, and even though voters sent a clear message in 2022, now the government is trying to pass the SAVE Act, which would prevent US citizens from being able to register to vote without jumping through hoops if your current name doesn't match the one on your birth certificate. If the SAVE Act passes, it will impact 84% of women. And now, one of our female council members is under attack. We have witnessed male members of the GOP fraudulently get COVID funding, which is a crime, accept major gifts in return for awarding contracts and projects, encourage and condone their spouse in violating election laws, which that's also a crime, engage in inappropriate public outbursts in a church at a candidate forum, form LLCs in other states in order to hide money in an attempt to sabotage a political opponent by spreading fabricated slanderous stories, and threaten another person on the statehouse floor regarding the topic of racism. Were any of these men censured by the Republican Party? If so, we haven't heard about it. And yet, the local GOP wants to censure a woman in their party because they don't like how she votes as a member of a nonpartisan governing authority, Wichita City Council. This is a direct attack on all women using threats and intimidation, and it's a tactic straight out of the Trump playbook. I have to surmise that the actions I noted by male members align with the GOP values, but a woman who votes the way her constituents want her to is a violation of their moral code. And regarding morals, each of us, unless you're a sociopath, has a moral compass. I have male friends who are members of the Republican Party, and on an individual basis, they would never do anything to undermine the rights of their wives, their daughters, their sisters, or their mothers. But as a collective, they seem to have no problem doing it. I simply can't wrap my head around that kind of mindset. Anyone who is willing to sell their moral compass and their very soul to a political party, and I include all political parties, is in a sad state. Women and the men who support them cannot afford to do nothing. I am calling upon all Wichitaans to do the just and moral thing and stand behind Councilmember Becky Tuttle and her right to vote in a nonpartisan manner for her constituents and the residents of Wichita. Thank you.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say, I stand behind Councilmember Tuttle.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Janet, it's always good to see you. I agree with you, and I also would like to say for the record, I stand behind Councilmember Tuttle.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Janet. Always good to see you. I agree. I stand with Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you, Janet. I will just read you an email that was sent to me by a man. "Transphobic racist B, you're done. Go back to Guatemala where you F belong. Don't you ever run for mayor again because you may be deported. Hey, here comes Ice Ice Baby. Love, peace, hope, and happiness."
Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. Janet, I believe that every person from this bench has the ability to vote their conscience. They're elected by their individual constituencies. They're accountable to their constituencies, and I would say that for Councilwoman Tuttle is ever as well as any one of you on this bench.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. And speaking on your email, that is absolutely horrible. That is horrendous, and that kind of language has no space in our community, and especially with public dialogue. So, that's horrible, and I hate to hear that. And please stay strong and push back against that kind of dialogue.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, can you please call the next individual?
Andrew Crane, Public Access Crosswalks.
Good morning, City Council and Mayor. I don't know if you read the article that was in the Wichita Eagle about the crosswalks and curb cuts and that need to be upgraded in downtown Wichita, and the, also the one-way streets, crosswalks that need to be upgraded. And the Access Advisory Board has been saying this for years. And I don't know why it hasn't got up to the chain of the city manager to make it, that we need to get this done as a big-time city and to make it accessible to the blind and low-vision and to the disability community. And I would like to encourage you guys to step out of your offices and walk the city streets, because I walk these streets every single day, folks. And it's time that we need to get some work done here and make our city accessible to the disability community and the blind community. I am a citizen of Wichita, been here for thirty, going on 37 years. So, I wanted you guys to encourage you guys to read that article and to get back with the Access Advisory Board and because the blind community is raising some big, raising some questions here to the city of Wichita. I would like to hear from council.
Thank you, Andrew.
And Mayor.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Hey, Andrew. When is the next Access Advisory Board meeting?
They meet, I believe, it is going to be the last week in April.
Last so?
On Wednesday, 10 o'clock, about in vision.
Is it a monthly meeting?
It is a monthly meeting.
All right. I'm going to try and make the next meeting.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. Andrew, I know we spoke on the phone yesterday. We'll be meeting hopefully in the next couple of weeks about this as well. I thank you for bringing it to our attention, and also, I think, the article for bringing it to our attention as well. And thank you for continuing to be an advocate for fighting specifically for blind, visually impaired individuals.
Andrew, thank you again for your advocacy. I know that the Access Advisory Board is the group that tells the council their opinion regarding some of the changes or any improvements. So, my question will now be directed to staff. City Manager, can you address how the Access Advisory Board was consulted before the roads changed from one ways to two ways?
Mayor, our city, or excuse me, our Director of Public Works in Utilities is the city's representative and has been for a period of time with the Access Advisory Board. I'll let him address that issue.
Good morning, Mayor and Councilmembers. Gary Janson, Public Works and Utilities. So, our coordination and collaboration with the Access Advisory Board has been ongoing for many, many years, and will continue on everything that we do under the guise of the federal laws related to ADA. One thing I just wanted to make clear, the fact that we converted downtown streets from one-way to two-way doesn't create anything different, a different situation than anything we deal with on a regular basis. On any of our street projects, on any of our improvements, anything we do related to infrastructure still follows the same guidelines, the same rules. This was not a special circumstance. It was not a special situation. Having said that, I can't tell you that I know for sure that this work that we're doing for conversion of the downtown streets was specifically discussed with the Access Advisory Board. I think, I mean, as far as us presenting a project to them. I'm confident there was a discussion at some point in time with the board about what it was that we were doing, but it was, again, presented in a way that these are the guidelines that we follow, this is what we do, asking for their input. The, some of the things that are at question here, in particular to the accessibility of the traffic signals, is not a federal requirement at this time. I'll just tell you real quick, and if- I'll just tell you real quick, and I've got some information that all the council members will see yet today in regards to this specific issue. In the past, the Access Advisory Board actually advised against utilizing accessible pedestrian signals in the downtown area. It's an environment that creates challenges for noise, ambient noise with traffic with the buildings. It makes them hard to hear. There were challenges with maintaining those accessible signals in the past. We heard concerns from residents. There's a variety of things that went into this. We've worked closely with InVision also and the local chapter of the National Federation of the Blind to look very strategically at specific intersections that make sense to consider for accessible pedestrian signals. Secondary to all of this, there's a very significant cost associated with implementation of these signals, and they have been very unreliable in trying to maintain. Having said all of that, I think we've done a really good job of collaborating with the Access Advisory Board with other groups. Again, InVision has got multiple clients. They come to us. They ask us to look at accessible routes. I'm confident that the communication we've had with the board has been what's needed, and we will continue that going forward.
Thank you, Gary. And for those that want to participate or watch, the Access Advisory Board meets fourth Wednesday of the month at 10:00 a.m. at the InVision Building at 610 North Main Street. The next meeting will be held on April 23, 2025. Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. Oh, there's Gary. So I've had several people reach out since the article came out. And I know we talked about it a little bit, about my dad, but it seems like the visually impaired community thinks that this is kind of coming out of left field, like they didn't... they didn't realize that this was not happening. I think some of them were under the impression that we were getting some of the signaling. And can you speak to a little bit? I know you did a little bit, but it seems like there's some communication gaps somewhere. And I want to make sure that personally, I know everything comes with a price tag, but they're a big part of our community too, and I want to make sure that we're not getting caught up on price and figuring out a way to make things easier for them as well. I hope that makes sense.
It does, and I appreciate that. And I don't want anybody to think we're getting caught up on price. I'll set that part aside. It is significant. But we'll set that part aside. I will tell you that going forward, installation of all new traffic signals will include accessible pedestrian signals because it is heading towards federal law requiring that. And so here soon, it's something that we'll have to do, and it'll be part of the budget for new projects going forward. Retrofitting of existing signals, especially in the downtown environment, becomes extremely challenging. It actually can add additional infrastructure because of proximity to intersections. Back to your original question, I can't find or see anywhere that we ever committed to doing what's being requested. What I'm confident in is that we have had very robust and engaging conversations with the Access Advisory Board. I would just mention again, I can go back about somewhere in the last 10 to 15 years. We actually had direction from the Access Advisory Board to not implement accessible pedestrian signals, so audible signals in the downtown area, because they were actually creating more confusion than not. So having said that, we continue to work with them, Federation of the Blind staff, local chapter. InVision has been a great partnership for us because they work directly with the blind and visually impaired community. We had not made that commitment. I think that came from somewhere else. I've heard a comment made about curb cuts and sidewalks and everything else. So far, the best I can tell is that's an anecdotal comment because we can't get any details. We've asked questions and have seen no proof that there's any issues related to that. So until we've got more specific information, I don't know where else to address that, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Gary, and thank you, Andrew. Mr. Clerk, are there any more individuals?
There are not.
This means that anyone from the public who would like to speak can take that spot. Please state your name and your district.
Hi, good morning. Bill Stout, District 5. Most of you know me. I was gonna save this for unfinished business, but I've sat here and watched staff members play on their phones while people speak, and it just drives home my point. The issue that was brought up last week about the question of a mayor versus a city manager actually came to head in Wichita 30 years ago. 1995, Bob Knight became the first person elected mayor in over 70 years in our city. Now, when in his first term as mayor, he'd served five, one year at a time, as an honorary position. And during those years, he worked diligently to get an elected mayor back on the ballot. The intention, as the voting public was made to believe, was that within four to five years with an elected mayor, we'd no longer need a paid city manager. Well, here we are 30 years later. We have both. Most people in the city have no idea what the difference is between the two. But I will tell you what we do know. We pay the mayor, please no offense, $131,000 a year, and we elected you, so I accept that. We pay the city manager over $250,000 a year. That does not include benefits, and he has zero accountability to the voters. You know, I grow tired of watching the endless stream of bureaucrats paraded in here as members of the city manager's office as they make deals that smell like rotting fish at the expense of the taxpayer with no accountability. In 1995, when we voted for an elected mayor, we were a city of just over 300,000 people. And we, as the voters, decided it was time for an accountable government. Now we have over 400,000. The only thing we've done is grow bureaucracy, grow a question of who's in charge, and a bloated and confusing system with a higher price tag. We either need an elected mayor or a city manager. It's time for our government to actually be transparent to those who pay the bills. Because to be brutally honest, right now, the city, the people of the city, have no idea who's in charge. It's clear as mud. Considering some of the outrageous expenditures that we've had to live with recently, like the artwork at the new water facility, by the way, that's still not operational, and the $250,000 toilets at parks, it might be time for a DOGE-style audit, top to bottom of our city. I understand that local government structure and change is a difficult topic. I know it's a short timeframe. That's not the fault of the taxpayers. Nevertheless, we deserve better than another 30 years of confusion and wasting more money, and yes, I said wasting, on another out-of-state consultant to tell us how to run our own city. I find that ridiculous. We, the people of the city of Wichita, deserve and expect and demand better stewardship of our money. Because at the end of the day, the city doesn't have a product. It collects taxes. That's our money. It's really simple. Comes down to this. We want a government that operates at the will of the voters rather than the desire of bureaucrats. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Councilmember Glasscock.
Mayor, thank you. Bill, I know that we'll have a lot more conversations about forms of government over the coming months. However, I... two things I wanted to address. Two of the spending projects you worked on were voted on by this council. They're not voted on by the manager. They're not implemented solely by the manager. They were voted on by this body of government, and this body of government should be held accountable for the votes that we take. I will also defend our staff. I have sent three emails for staff members, two staff in this room that have responded to emails regarding whether that be some public comment, whether that be a question I had regarding about something on the agenda. And so I can't speak for all the staff, but many of the staff in this, if they're on their phones, it's because they're responding maybe to questions that we have. They're responding to follow-up regarding things. And so just because they're on their phones does not mean they're working, they're paying attention, just like we are up here. And I will defend our staff because they're incredibly responsive when I have reached out to them, particularly the ones in this room right now.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Ditto to Councilmember Glasscock. And just for the record for everybody watching, there are no $250,000 toilets in the city of Wichita.
City Manager Leighton, can you address the status of the outdoor restrooms? I did see that the outdoor restrooms were installed by the river. Can you tell us again the cost of these bathrooms and the status of these bathrooms?
Mayor and Councilmembers, Gary Janson, again. Current status of the restrooms, the one at A Price Woodard Park has been installed, is effectively complete. Working on the one at Nascar Park now. We're shooting for mid-May-ish to open both of them at the same time. We've got everything ready from an operation standpoint and cleaning standpoint, ready to go. My best recollection, total cost, all in, which includes everything for water and sewer service. There's concrete flatwork associated with these for full installation was right around $500,000 for both. I don't remember how that breaks down for the facility itself. But again, there's a lot of ancillary work, things tied to it that have to be done to make these operational.
Thank you very much, Gary. I see no further comments from council members. We will be talking about next week's council meeting at the end of the new business. So if anyone wants to speak at that time, that will be your opportunity. City Clerk, can you please call the next item?
Consent Agenda Items 1 through 20.
Councilmembers, are there any items to be polled? I see none. I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 1 through 20.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Board of Bids and Contracts stated April 14, 2025.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council, Josh Lawber, Department of Finance. The Board of Bids and Contracts convened yesterday, April 14, 2025, for the following items. For engineering, we have the Lift Station 56 improvements for Wildcat Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $347,050. We have the Stormwater Sewer #813 Lincoln Street Dam Repairs for Don Linger and Sons Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $235,035. We have the Water Distribution System, Stormwater System #796, and Sanitary Sewer Phase 1 to serve Meridian 53rd and 2nd Edition for Wildcat Construction Company Incorporated for an aggregate bid total of $443,402.80. For purchasing, we have the mowing, edging, and trim scattered sites and vacant lots for Housing for Getting It Done Enterprises Incorporated for an estimated annual use of $48,000. We have the Combination High-Pressure Sewer Cleaner and Vacuum Debris Removal Truck for Kirby Smith Machinery for an aggregate total of $673,171. We have the Cisco Catalyst Switches for Logicalis Incorporated for $208,639.24. We have the Traffic Signs Contract Change Order for Vulcan Incorporated, doing business as Vulcan Signs, for an estimated annual usage of $294,934.92 amended. This item I'm pulling, I need to bring back to you. There was a clerical error, technical error in the contract draft, so this will be coming back shortly. For airport, we have the Airport East Perimeter Fence Phase 1 for Ready Fence LLC, doing business as Arrow Fence Company, for $234,525.75. This is how to become a vendor with the city. This is a purchasing calendar of small business opportunities that the city is hosting or participating with our small business resource partners. These are open public opportunities today. And I'd be happy to try to answer any of your questions, and I recommend your approval with the exception of liquid chlorine.
Thank you, Josh. Questions for staff? I will go to slide number eight, please. Can you talk about this? We've had questions from community regarding vacant lots and the responsibility where it lies. Can you talk, maybe you or someone from staff, regarding these vacant lots? How the city will come and do that work, but it will then be the responsibility of the property owner?
Sure. I don't know if we had somebody from Housing. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor, Members of Council. Sally Steng with the Housing Department. This particular bid is only for mowing and edging of the public housing properties, those that are vacant and up for sale. It takes some time to get through that process. Those properties have to be mowed.
And can you address why the lowest bid was not taken for this one?
Sure.
Thank you.
Tag team. So this is the lowest bid. It looks deceptive in the fact that Robin Hood Industries LLC only bidded one group or Group 2. There were two groups requested. So two groups combined in the aggregate is $48,000 is the low bid.
Thank you very much, Josh. And can you go to slide number 15 really quick?
Certainly.
Since we just had a proclamation regarding small business, this is a reminder. Can you address how you're really reaching out to small businesses in our community so that they can bid for these city jobs?
Sure. I always love that question. That's a whole topic in itself. So one thing that we're doing is we have a Emerging Disadvantaged Business Enterprise Program. We have a gentleman that oversees that program, and part of his strategic plan document is he's outreaching to a certain number of vendors with the State of Kansas Department of Commerce, Minority and Women Business, and exporting that data of who's registered with the state, contacting within that spreadsheet based on ZIP codes. Start with city, start with South Central Kansas, then work the entire state. We've basically gotten to the point after a year of the entire state, and now we're just refreshing the list. We're also working with the city's Emerging Business Enterprise Program, sending out, I think, 10 vendors per week where we're notifying them, hey, make sure you register with the city, Wichita. This is how you can do business with us. I noticed that you don't have commodities or what types of goods and services you offer. Highly recommend you put that, so you're the first in the know. We also are completing a monthly newsletter, Emerging and Disadvantaged Business Enterprise Newsletter, that will have this calendar and will have tidbits or tips. We're also completing strategic events where we're doing education. Bonding typically comes up, insurance comes up. We'll work with the Small Business Administration. We'll also work with the McConnell Air Force Base. We'll also work with other purchasing agencies in the area as a lead typically, given our size and our volume. We're doing a lot. I would be remiss to say that I am aware of other agencies that in procurement are doing these types of activities. So I'm very proud of the staff we have, and I'm very appreciative of any opportunity to talk about the inroads that we're making. Anytime that we can work with departments, we're in a unique position where we're advocating for vendors, and we're also advocating for the city and the taxpayer and our dollars to make sure that how do we find a good hybrid of both? Where in theory, I could get you a really good price on a huge economies of scale? Or do I need to have tracked bidding? Do I need to have lump sums of different locations where small business opportunities are made available? So it's a constant process and constant development.
Thank you, Josh. I will move to approve the Board of Bids and Contracts for April 14, 2025.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Petitions for Public Improvements.
Good morning, Mayor, City Councilmembers. Paul Gunsmann, Public Works in Utilities, for the record. I have one location for your consideration this morning. The signatures on the petition represent 100% of the improvement district, and the petition is valid per Kansas statute. Pegasus Edition and Pegasus Second Edition, located in District 2, the project will provide sewer improvements required for a new residential development. It is recommended that the city council approve the new petition in budget, adopt a new resolution, and authorize necessary signatures. And I will stand for questions.
Thank you, Paul. Any questions for staff? I see none. I move to approve the petitions for public improvements.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Public hearing and request by Commonwealth Development Corporation for approval of a letter of intent to issue multifamily housing revenue bonds.
Honorable Mayor, Members of Council, Troy Anderson, Assistant City Manager. So this item is a request for approval of issuance of revenue bonds. The project is a project that was brought to us by Commonwealth Development Corporation. You'll hear me refer to them as Commonwealth throughout. They're actually a national leader in developing affordable housing. We're really excited about bringing in new developer and new builder to town. Commonwealth is requesting issuance of revenue bonds in an amount of approximately $9.2 million. What they want to do is develop a 42-unit multifamily residential low-income housing project. In addition to the revenue bonds, they're also going through the process right now of applying for 9% low-income housing tax credits. This request is for sales tax exemption only. The approximate value of the sales tax exemption is about $345,000, city share of which is a little more than $26,000. Again, revenue bonds are a mechanism for achieving a sales tax exemption and property tax abate and/or property tax abatement. In this case, again, this is just for sales tax exemption. In a transaction, the city is not lending any money, bears no risk. Company is required to acquire all of its own financing. There are no taxpayer dollars at risk. All costs are borne by the company requesting the use of the bonds. In this case, Commonwealth agrees to pay all costs of issuing the bonds and also agrees to pay any annual origination fees. Bonds will be purchased by Commonwealth or a related entity. Actual bond documents that will be part of the issuance will be prepared by outside bond counsel, and then ultimately, city's law department will review and approve the final form prior to the issuance of any bonds. With that being said, staff's recommendation is that city council adopt the resolution and authorize the necessary signatures. I remember the impression we do have representatives here from Commonwealth today that might be able to answer any questions directly to the developer, but otherwise I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Troy. Questions for staff, beginning with Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Troy. The light tech part of this, is a representative here?
Good morning. My name is Liz Peters, and I'm a development manager with Commonwealth Development. So thank you for having me.
Well, good morning. Welcome. Now, you guys, I'm sure you're familiar with some of the recent legislation regarding the light tech tax credits.
Correct, with the state credit.
Yes, ma'am. Are you still intent on pursuing despite the obstacles that kind of are laid at our feet now with it?
Yeah, I think it is important to note, so we will be applying for the credits, both federal and state in May, and we expect...
Which hasn't been shut yet.
Right, so yes, 2025. The decision on that will be around July, so we expect, you know, if the award is in our favor, which again, the local support, the support from the city of Wichita is very critical, both in the form of the IRBs as well as we have been presenting to the Affordable Housing Review Board. And so it's just very important to us to have this city support. So if we do receive the tax credit award, we expect to close on our construction loan at the end of 2025, and we expect about a 14-month construction duration. And so that would put us in the spring of 2027. We would be welcoming those 42 units to the community.
And you still, even if you don't get the light tech, you still plan on going through with the project?
That's correct. We would, you know, plan to hopefully renew our option to purchase the land and find a, you know, a way to find financing for a further round.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Liz, I have a couple of questions for you. You're a new developer into Wichita from Wisconsin. Can you share why you decided to come to Wichita? And are there other opportunities for more affordable housing?
Sure, thank you for your question. So again, Commonwealth is a national developer. We really look for communities that have a need for affordable housing. We know that the need is great here. We see, you know, that there is about 30,000 households, according to HUD's Comprehensive Community Survey. So those 30,000 households, you know, those are the most vulnerable people within our community. And I think, you know, we have our expertise, which is bringing affordable housing to communities. And, you know, we've been working with the city of Wichita, again, Sally Stang, with the Housing Department, you know, been working to get the recommendation for our project from the Affordable Housing Review Board. So yeah, really just our intention to reach out to all stakeholders within the project and again, just identify that community need.
Thank you, Liz. I have a couple of questions for Troy. This is more in regards to over the last year and a few months, we've had several of these types of proposals for affordable housing. Is there a database of the number of units that are coming online because they did receive a light tech? Or maybe did not get the light tech, and that's the reason why we're not getting the units? Is there a running total of these that we can share with community? Because I know that there's a big development in Councilmember Tuttle's district regarding senior citizens and affordable housing. So is there a list where we can look at all those units that are getting either federal, state, as well as local incentives?
So I'm going to answer at a really, really high level, and then I might turn to our housing expert. KHRC manages the database of all the projects that are awarded and will identify the number of units. But again, I might call on Sally Stang, our housing director. She might have a more articulate answer.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of Council. Sally Stang, for the record again. I do have a spreadsheet of awards and allocations back to 2017. It's a little bit challenging because the way KHRC releases that data is not consistent between the 4% and the 9%. And so oftentimes, we're not able to see the number of units, but we can see the dollars in. I am happy to share that with you after the meeting.
That would be great, Sally. Thank you. I see no further questions for staff or the developer. Thank you very much. We will now open it up for public comment. I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. This resides in Councilmember Hoheisel's district.
Thank you, Mayor. We all know that there's a definite need for more affordable housing in our community. And I think the old saying is you take down an elephant one bite at a time. This looks like a pretty decent bite right here. We need more of this definitely, but it is my honor to be able to move at the city council, close the public hearing, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Public hearing and request by Lang Gen Y LLC for approval of a letter of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds.
Honorable Mayor, Members of Council, again, Troy Anderson, Assistant City Manager. This one along the same lines, requesting the issuance of revenue bonds. Unfortunately, this one's not for affordable housing units, but this is for a project that we are really excited about. It's somewhat of an adaptive reuse to a former building. More specifically, Lang Gen Y LLC. I'll refer to them as Lang throughout, is a real estate holding company that will lease to Lang Companies, sort of their corporate office, corporate user, the subject property. They're requesting the issuance of revenue bonds in the amount of about $3 million. And this again is the renovation of the former Royal Caribbean Call Center building into their new corporate headquarters. Renovations include a complete exterior refresh, redesigned front entry and lobby, second floor remodel, which will really be sort of the space that's dedicated to their corporate headquarters, and ultimately basement facilities and facilities throughout that they'll be able to utilize to attract talent and provide them with the amenities that they need for a true corporate headquarters. Construction will begin immediately and be completed by the end of the year. This request, like the previous request, is for sales tax exemption only. Approximate value of the sales tax exemption is $112,000, city share of which is approximately $8,700. We'll kind of run through the prepared statement again. Revenue bonds are a mechanism for achieving a sales tax exemption and/or property tax abatement. In this case, sales tax exemption only. In a revenue bond transaction, city is not lending any money and bears no risk. The company is required to acquire all of its own financing. There are no taxpayer dollars at risk here. All costs are borne by the company requesting the use of the bonds. In this case, Lang agrees to pay all costs of issuing the bonds and agrees to pay any annual origination fees. Bonds will be purchased by Lang or a related entity. Bond documents will be prepared by outside counsel, but ultimately, law department will review and approve final form of any bond documents prior to the issuance. And with that being said, staff recommends the city council adopt the resolution, authorize the necessary signatures. We do have a representative from Lang, which may actually be a familiar face to you all to answer any questions that you may have, but otherwise I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Troy. Questions for staff, beginning with Councilmember Glasscock.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Few questions. At the end of the expression of the green sheet, it says IRBs are a mechanism for achieving sales tax exemption, property tax abatement for companies that are expanding and maybe hiring new employees. Is Lang hiring new employees with this restructure?
I'll let the representative speak to that.
Good morning, Mark Elder with Lang Development. Lang is, and most of this is going to be relocated, but we are going to be expanding offices to be able to hire additional employees into the future. I don't have a count on that, but, you know, as we expand, we'll be, we're going to have opportunities to have that growth within the offices.
Is that the justification for only seeking the sales tax exemption and not the property tax abatement?
That's part of the reason why at this time, we're not seeking the property tax abatement. We're ready to go on the project, and so we're seeking that sales tax exemption in order to move forward with that construction and start the expansion.
Okay, and the total expansion efforts are approximately about $3 million?
Correct. As far as the construction FFNE, the land acquisition has occurred, but it's not part of this because it's not applicable for the exemption.
This might be a question for Troy. So Troy, given that they're making $3 million investment to the property, likely their property taxes will increase on this property. Do you know what they're currently paying and what maybe the subsequent investment will be?
I do not have those, I do not have that information available to me at this moment. I can certainly get that information and give you some estimates of what we think the property tax obligation would be thereafter.
Even an estimate, so let's say we have current property tax rules because of the investment. Will we, the city be, or when will the city see the full return of $8,770 in terms of the tax revenue back because of the property tax investment?
I'd be remiss if I even started kind of guessing, right? Let me get you some information on how quickly sort of that return on that investment would be.
Yeah, I'd be interested just the ROI, if it's, you know, next year, or if it's 10 years, or it's 20 years. Like, when will we see the full return of our abatement? Sales tax on the property tax portion of it.
Yeah, we'll go back. We'll evaluate what the property tax obligation is today as it's broken out to the various taxing jurisdictions. We'll have to do some comps with regards to other sort of office buildings in and around that area. We'll make some projections on what we think that, what that $3 million impact will be on the future tax obligation. And yeah, let me do, let me do some calculations, some analysis, and let me get back with you.
I have a few more questions, so thank you for that.
I'm going to follow up really quick before I pass it to a council member. Can you find that out before we actually vote for this? I just want to know what the property taxes are right now on this current property, and that should be someone that can find that. Can you let us know currently what the property taxes are for that location? Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, you guys, that's one of the things I was going to ask about is usually we have an ROI, which is on investment attached with these, and don't have one here.
If I can't, the ROI normally is done when you have a property tax exemption, but I don't believe we calculate one when there's just solely a sales tax.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. I'm still, I'm curious about that as well, though. The other taxing jurisdictions, when do they hear this, and what is their part in the process? School District, USD 259, kind of specifically, but also county.
So... So during the process, right, we rely on the city's economic development guidelines as the guidelines for bringing applications such as these to city council. So as projects are brought before the city and ultimately city council, we use those guidelines, which were ultimately agreed upon by at least city and county, right? That's why they are called the City of Wichita, Sedgwick County Economic Development Guidelines. Those rules and regulations around incentive programs that are being brought before city council have all been mutually agreed upon, right? We engage the school district on occasion, right? But for all intents and purposes, there is not a review by all of the other taxing jurisdictions as part of every application. The framework for incentives was was kind of set forth years ago in the guidelines. That's the best way I can probably answer that question today.
So do they ever vote on any of these?
No, they don't.
It just comes down to the city and whether we want to take that action.
That's correct, yep.
Okay, appreciate it.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd be interested to see if there's any public comment. I'd like the hard numbers before voting on it, and so if we can't get those today, I'm likely to table. I know maybe an ROI isn't customary for this, but it also is adding no new jobs. And so when we're looking at abating from the city's perspective, $8,770 in terms of investment and a full sales tax exemption of $1,112, I could justify that if we were adding jobs to the property, not just relocating from one location to another without an ROI, because I think that would be the return in terms of jobs. And so we're not taking a risk, but the city is taking a loss by an individual purchasing it with no new jobs and then abating the sales tax exemption from it. So I would be interested in just, when will we get an ROI in terms of property tax abatement that we're made whole with trying to help leverage maybe the assets for the original $3,000 investment? So I want to hear more conversation, but that's my initial thoughts.
I'm actually looking at the city of Wichita's website. When you click on Departments and then Economic Development, this is the area where we talk about IRBs. And since we're specifically talking for a for-profit company, it does say, "For-profit companies may be considered for IRBs if they are investing capital to develop new facilities, add machinery and equipment, and create new jobs." So there's an "and" there. The following paragraph says, "To qualify, companies must generate the majority of their revenue from outside of Sedgwick County, and wages for the new jobs must meet certain standards." So my question now will be to Mark Elder, who represents Lang. Is a majority of the revenue coming from outside of Sedgwick County for your company?
I do not have the actual calculation in front of us, but Redbox ships containers throughout the world. So this is actually just one of several manufacturing facilities, but we manufacture and ship not only throughout the US but throughout the world.
Troy.
Okay, so in response to your question, and again, really high level, need to do a deep dive just to make sure, but pulling up the property tax rule, property tax record for this. In 2023, the property tax obligation was valued at... There with me for just a second. Was valued at $1.8 million. And as a result, the obligation was approximately $200,000 a year. So if that, again, back of napkin math, that was the entire tax obligation, $200,000. So if that, again, back of napkin math, that was the entire tax obligation, $200,000 for a $1.8 million project. If they add $3 million in CapEx, you probably won't see that full $3 million added to property value. You might see 65, 75% of that, so let's say that doubled, right? And now all of a sudden, the property value and the assessed value was double that, so 1.8, $3.6 million, the general tax obligation that would be paid would arguably sort of double, right? And so that obligation would jump from probably $200,000 to almost $400,000 a year. That would get made up arguably in very short order. We can get you some better exact numbers, but that's back of napkin type of math.
And again, I want to make sure, Mark Elder's representing Lang, will you guys be coming back for property tax abatement?
We actually have several expansion projects going on at this time. I have not been informed on whether we'd be coming back for property tax abatement. At this time, I am aware that we are coming forward for the sales tax exemption.
So no?
I've, at this time, I have not been told that we are asking for property tax abatement.
So this is only for sales tax, and we won't come back in a few months and ask for property tax abatement, is that correct?
It's my understanding that we're, we're asking for the sales tax exemption. I haven't been given a directive that we'd be coming back for property tax abatement.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnston?
Thank you, Mayor. I also pulled it up on the county's website, and Troy is correct. Last year, it was $1,816,000, which is a 3% decrease from the year before of $1,874,000 change, which is a 73% decrease from when it was occupied. When it was occupied, it was a little over $7 million. But now, if the building is occupied, will be occupied again, I would expect that value to be somewhere in the $7 million range, and the property taxes will go up significantly.
That would be our expectation as well, correct?
So I'm, I'm more than comfortable with it, with voting for it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Johnston. Councilmember Hoheisel?
Actually, I will save this for discussion at the bench, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I see no further questions for staff or the developer. We will now open it up for public comment.
Good morning, Mayor and members of Wichita City Council. My name is John Todd. I live at 1559 North Payne in District 4. Councilmember Ballard's District, is it 6? Excuse me. I thought I may be moved overnight. I speak as a private citizen for myself and not for any other group. I'm going to make this short. I am no fan of property, any type of tax abatements for select businesses. They're not fair to other businesses or to the taxpayers. If you're going to offer tax abatements for property or sales tax, your general policy should be to offer to everyone and not just select businesses, because it isn't fair. It doesn't pay, it doesn't, it's not a level playing field. And on issues that do impact the taxes for other government entities like the school district and the county, I really believe that they, they should have a right to weigh in on these types of decisions. I do applaud the developer for doing the fine project for Delano. I strongly support that, but I don't support the tax abatement. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else from the community who would like to speak on this topic? I see none. I'll bring it back to the bench. Councilmember Glasscock?
I acquiesce to Councilman Hoheisel on all comments.
Councilmember Hoheisel?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a question maybe for Councilmember Johnston, who has a little more knowledge on this. Does property value really go down if a building, that much, if a building is unoccupied?
It does. I have personal, personal experience for that. So to the detriment of my bottom line.
Okay.
It does, it does go down. And I might, just there, is correct that the property taxes were two, almost $203,023, 24, it was a little less than $54,000. So it drops considerably when it's empty. It's not, not worth as much.
When was the last time that building was occupied, Mark?
Two years ago.
Two years ago? And then it, does it just naturally depreciate like that, or is that a, you asked for maybe a reassessment?
You, sometimes you have to ask for it, yes. That is true. You have to ask for it, and property is valued on, on the location, the building itself, and income. Obviously, if there's no income, that the building value will significantly drop and decrease. Therefore, the county appraiser will drop the value of that building.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Glasscock?
Thank you, Mayor. I think this might be the first one that's come before I've been here where no jobs were added with an exemption. I could stand corrected, but this feels unique compared to some of the other ones. I appreciate, Troy, the back of the napkin math. I think that's very helpful, and I would just like to see that maybe a little bit more solidified, because, and I'm thankful you can do math that quickly and add it on there. It's a little messy, but if we could just have a quick solidification of that, so when it comes that we can see an ROI that's panned out pretty quickly. We have a council meeting now that we're going to be adding on April 22nd, and I would feel comfortable just tabling this for a week to be able to get those hard numbers, to be able to come back. I'm supportive of the project. I think it could be a great project, especially for southwest Wichita. I've been out to the facility. I've talked to the applicant previously about it, and I'm thankful for their bringing jobs and investing very heavily in southwest industry. And so I would, I, this would be a question for Jennifer. We haven't officially taken the council agenda item, but we're adding the 22nd to our meeting, but we're doing that later in this meeting to add next week. Can I add this to the agenda?
You can. You can say, subject to the motion subsequent being approved, to schedule that April 22nd meeting.
I don't think a week should probably hurt the project or delay the project, and so seeing there's nobody else on the agenda, I would make a motion that we hear this public hearing and the request by Lang Gen Y LLC with approval of letter of intent, subject to a subsequent motion to add April 22nd council agenda, to add this to the council agenda, if that motion is prevailing later.
And I'll just suggest that's a motion to defer this.
Motion to defer.
Thank you.
I second that. We have a motion and a second for delay dependent upon passing of an additional council meeting, which would be next week on Tuesday. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
2025 Wichita River Festival Memorandum of Understanding.
Good morning, Mayor. Councilwoman Lindsay Benaka, Arts and Cultural Services with the City Manager's Office. Believe it or not, it's Riverfest time, so I'm here to present the city's annual MOU with Wichita Festivals, Inc. A little bit of background, that we've been partnering with Wichita Festivals to produce this event, multi-day community event since 1972. The event attracts local attendees and regional tourists alike. The event completes the city's community event application in addition to this MOU process. And historically, we've had an MOU to account for the in-kind services and general sponsorship. Notable updates to the MOU this year are really based in the security section, in Section 3. We included language at the request of WPD to clarify the payment structure to WPD. And historically, festival had contracted police officers directly. We're now moving into where they, the department scheduled it, and then the festival pays PD directly versus individual officers. It's just a lot, a lot easier for both parties to streamline that process. We also have additional language regarding incident command posts and emergency preparedness. Over the last couple of years, we've added in a reporting section to the MOU. You'll see in your agenda packet that you have the 2024 annual report from Riverfest. And I will just note that the report is very similar to what we have in all of our cultural arts contractual agreements for funding. The MOU identifies our in-kind support, which includes various parks and recreation levels of support, including picnic tables and trash, trash services, usage of the festival area, street closure and traffic engineering support, additional street sweeping that takes place before and after the event, and additional public safety support. The sponsorship benefits are pretty standard year over year. They include city logo on print and digital media, recognition and public announcements, sponsor recognition events, framed and signed Riverfest posters, excuse me, that should be 2025, commemorative sponsorship plaque, and buttons for city staff who are assigned to work the event. According to Wichita Festivals, they report the following economic impact for the event: over $27 million annually back into our community; the volunteer contribution of time is worth $2.5 million; button food and beverage revenue of approximately $1 million annually; vendor support at $1 million; sponsorship support of $750,000 plus; and various in-kind sponsorships at $250,000. Financial considerations for this MOU include $40,000 in cash sponsorship for the event itself, and an additional up to $40,000 for a special emphasis event, and approximately $130,000 for in-kind WPD-related expenditures. And staff recommend approving the MOU and authorizing the necessary signatures. I do note that there are a few representatives from Riverfest in attendance if you have direct questions for them as well.
Thank you, Lindsay. Questions for staff? I will ask Brianna to come forward and just share about River Festival. This will be an opportunity for community to gather, as we just did with Open Streets ICT. My question really is regarding the $27 million back to the community and economic impact. Can you, Brianna, talk about what are some things that you continue to change or make better, enhance for this upcoming Riverfest so that it does become a community-wide event?
Absolutely. Thank you, Council and everyone present for allowing me to speak today in regards to Riverfest. I will do an initial introduction as well. If you have not met me, my name is Brianna Mugg, and I am the President and CEO of Wichita Festivals. What we have continued to do is to continue to innovate Wichita Festivals. The Riverfest has always been a place for families to gather, for people to gather in the community and show togetherness. For over 53 years, we've been able to do so. Some of the things that we are continuing to bring in, we have our Children's Entrepreneurship Network, who will bring in over 100 children's entrepreneurship booths that will line Douglas and wrap around to Main Street, where the kids will actually be able to present their crafts, present their different businesses and things that they have to offer. And I think that is one of the neatest things that we absolutely have. Some of the other things that we are bringing into our Riverfest this year are not only our concerts, but also we have different tournaments. We are partnering in with ESPN Wichita. We are also doing a variety of partnerships in with, with schools and educational organizations. We have our Future Fest, which used to be called Steam City, to basically continue to move forward and what that looks like for, for science and technology and different things that will wrap around for the children. We also have big movie nights. Our Military Night is also one of our big nights that we have. That'll be on Wednesday. And as we continue to move forward, we are building the cornerstones that are going to show in year over year for what we can bring into the community. Those are just our basic ways of how we are continuing to build in and bring more and more revenue into the Wichita community.
Can you remind us the dates again?
Absolutely. May 30th through June 7th are the dates of Riverfest this year.
So it's nine days?
Nine days of fun and exciting activities for you and your families.
And can you talk about the buttons? Right now, there's a discounted rate, is that correct?
You are 100% correct. We have our Early Bird Buttons. That is going on from April 11th through April 26th. The buttons will be $15. So for right now, you can get the button for $5 less. After that, come in April 27th, the buttons will go up $5, and they will be $20 this year.
Thank you very much, Brianna, and the entire team at Riverfest and the hundreds of volunteers that you have. Nine days of fun for $15 right now, which is a dollar and 66 cents or so per day.
Per day.
So encouraging people to buy those buttons now, right?
Absolutely. If you want to get in, this is the best time to get in on those awesome specials that we continue to have. You won't find anywhere around the states that will allow you to come and celebrate and have fun for a dollar and 66 cents.
Thank you. Councilmember Glasscock?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for unveiling your concert lineup as well. Last year, I had an incredible time going to all the concerts, and I will say for the record, I'm most excited about Florida coming, and will plan on attending the concert, I imagine, with some of my colleagues. So it'll be a lot of fun. Thank you.
Wonderful.
Thank you very much.
And I just have one more note. I would like to sincerely thank you to the city of Wichita and to the council for your continued support of Riverfest. Riverfest is a not-for-profit organization that we actually look forward to sponsorships and private donors, just to make sure that we operate and continue to function within this city. And because of your support, we'll be able to do so this year and years to come. So thank you to all of you.
Thank you, Brianna. We will now open it up for public comment. I see none. I'll bring it back to the bench. This resides in multiple districts, so I will be, I'll take the honor of doing this motion. And for full disclosure, I was a schooner mate for Riverfest and know the value of Riverfest, of bringing community together. And I'm a big advocate for community-wide events that truly are intergenerational and bring community together, but also knowing that this is a big economic impact also for the city that supports small businesses, as well as those young entrepreneurs that are in the making right here in our community. And I appreciate that you continue to innovate the festival, and we'll continue to encourage people to volunteer as well for Riverfest and all the different events that you guys put on throughout the year. So with that, I will move to approve the Memorandum of Understanding between the city of Wichita and Wichita Festivals, Inc., for the 2025 Wichita River Festival, which includes $40,000 for a cash sponsorship, $40,000 for a special program, and in-kind services provided by the city of Wichita and authorized necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Design Concept Supplemental Design Agreement Number 1 and Funding for Harry Street from 127th Street East to 143rd Street West.
Good morning again, Mayor, City Councilmembers, Paul Gunsmann, Public Works and Utilities for the Record. The item before you is Design Concept and Supplemental Agreement for Harry Street from 127th through 143rd Street East. This is a picture of the location of the project. To the south of the screen is Harry Street and 127th, 143rd. On February 6th, 2024, City Council approved funding for concept design of Harry Street East improvements. On July 16th, 2024, the City Council approved an agreement with JEO for a design concept. And on February 10th, 2025, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board, as well as District 2 Advisory Board, approved the design concept. Harry Street from 127th East to 143rd Street East is currently a two-lane street with ditches and no sidewalk, as shown in the following pictures. And we will, along Spring Hollow there, as we go through design, we will try to keep those existing trees along the fence. The proposed concept for the project is a three-lane roadway with one lane in each direction with a center two-way left turn lane with raised medians where they fit. We will also construct right-turn D-cell lanes into, to serve some of the residential streets, such as Triple Crown. We will also construct a 10-foot multi-use path on the south side of the road with a 6-foot sidewalk on the north side of Harry Street. And we are also proposing to install a mid-block crosswalk with a raised median at that location to provide a refuge for pedestrians across, across Harry Street. This is towards the east end of the project, and we have Christian McCall of School there along 143rd, south of Harry, between Harry and Pawnee, as well as Southeast High School down at Pawnee and 127th Street. between Harry and Pawnee, as well as Southeast High School down at Pawnee and 127th Street. The design service fee to date is $184,000, which was approved by City Council on July 16th, 2024. The cost of supplemental design agreement number one is $315,000, which brings the total design fee to just under $500,000. The existing budget of $385,000 was approved by City Council on February 6th, 2024, funded by local sales tax. And the staff is recommending initiating $750,000 from the adopted 2025 through 2034 capital improvement program programmed in 2025 for a total revised budget of $1.135 million. And we anticipate construction to begin in 2028. With that, it is recommended that the City Council approve the design concept and supplemental design agreement number one and adopt the amending resolution. And I will stand for questions.
Thank you, Paul. We'll begin with Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Appreciate the presentation, Paul. Just real quick on the pedestrian crossing. Will there be those flashing lights to show someone going across the street?
We have not gotten that far into design, but that would be, you know, under consideration as we move forward.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Johnston.
Paul, I noticed it says that the crosswalk is raised. We talked about that a little bit last week. Slow down traffic. Do you anticipate that we'll slow down traffic? And are EMS and stuff okay with that?
We haven't really gotten that far into design, Vice Mayor. As we have shown it in the concept plan, it's just the marked crosswalk. At this time, we're not proposing to raise it.
Not to raise it.
Right, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. I see no further questions for you. We'll open it up for public comment. I see none. I'll bring it back to the bench. This resides in Councilmember Tuttle's district.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul, for the presentation. Great job, as always. Thank you for your team. When this item came to my district advisory board, we had some road bust discussion. We had quite a few residents who just had questions about the size of the sidewalk. But I think your staff just did an outstanding job of explaining why it is so wide so we can have people, accessibility if they need wheelchairs or, you know, strollers and all the things. So with that said, I move that the City Council approve the design concept and supplemental design agreement number one, adopt the amending resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. 7-0. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
2024 Wichita Land Bank Annual Report.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. My name is Carmen Hoffine. I'm the Real Property Section Manager for the Department of Housing and Community Services. And I'm here today to present the Wichita Land Bank 2024 Annual Report. Okay, for a little bit of background, the Wichita Land Bank was established in 2021. The land bank may acquire, hold, manage, and convey property to convert to productive use. Primary activity of the land bank will be in neighborhoods within the established central area in Wichita. Additional focus is underutilized or distressed properties. The land bank was recommended in the 2019 Places for People Plan. The land bank is required to make an informal and unaudited annual report to the City Council on or before April 15th of each year. This report includes receipts and disbursements from all funds under its control, all property transactions occurring each year, inventory of all property held by the land bank, and the report must be published in the city newspaper. The 2024 Wichita Land Bank Annual Report includes the approval of proposal to purchases of two parcels at Ninth and Ash, no disposition of properties, no receipts or disbursements from funds under the Wichita Land Bank control. For the analysis, in 2024, the Wichita Land Bank Board of Trustees and staff conducted the following parcel reviews. A potential donation located on 3981 East Whitney. This was not acquired due to demolition and maintenance costs and the lack of interested buyers due to the location of the property. Another potential donation of a 23-unit multifamily apartment complex. This was not acquired due to the substantial debt, structural repairs, and HUD regulations prohibiting the city from managing properties where it holds tenant vouchers. The Wichita Land Bank currently remains in pilot phase. In 2024, three key challenges have continued. The three challenges are funding source limitations, tax sale challenges, and staff capacity limitations. Regarding the funding source limitations, the projects using community development block grant funds can be tailored to community needs. Activities must meet eligible national objectives. The Wichita Land Bank must only acquire properties with which an eligible outcome can be anticipated. Title work and preliminary processes must link to eligible outcomes. Other resources are needed to effectively do preliminary review of potential land bank acquisitions or to pilot opportunities or CDBG. Eligible outcomes are not assured. Regarding the tax sale challenges, Cedric County interprets tax foreclosure statutes differently than other Kansas land bank models. Bidding on properties begins at a dollar, not delinquent amount owed. Currently, participation by the land bank will require authorization for staff to bid at sale using city resources. The Board of Trustees has recommended legislative advocacy at the state level regarding tax sale procedures. Regarding staff capacity limitations, currently, there are two staff members are dedicated to piloting the land bank, affordable housing fund projects, and home projects. Administration of Affordable Housing Fund has significantly impacted staff capacity available to support the land bank pilot efforts. These challenges have prompted conversations regarding regular operations. On March 13th, 2024, the Wichita Land Bank Board of Trustees voted to suspend portion of bylaws governing established regular meetings and conducting at least nine meetings annually. The board will continue to meet at least three times annually. Regular meeting dates and times will be set, but may be canceled for lack of business. This suspension will continue through December 31st of 2025 in alignment with staff capacity being redeployed to deliver the Affordable Housing Fund. For financial considerations, the Wichita Land Bank had no receipts or disbursements from funds under its control in 2024. $650 was spent from Housing and Community Services, Community Development Block Grant, administrative funding for the grounds maintenance on 1011 North Ash and 2046 East 9th. Regarding legal considerations, this report fulfills the Wichita Land Bank's duty to present an informal and unaudited annual report of the prior year's activities on or before April 15th of each year. The report will also be published in the official city newspaper. Staff recommendation is to receive and file the 2024 Wichita Land Bank Annual Report. And I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Carmen. We'll begin with Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Carmen, for the presentation. The, I know this is receiving files, so there's not a lot of action we can take right now. But I do have a number of questions. How much money from CDBG goes into the land bank running the land bank every year?
So regard, Sally has this question. Thank you, Sally.
Good morning again, Mayor and Council, Sally Stang, for the record. CDBG funds, in order for us to expend CDBG funds, we have to have a known qualifying eligible activity at the end. And so last year, we only spent $650,000, or $650 in mowing on the Ninth and Ash properties that do have a qualifying activity. Doesn't, we didn't sell until 2025, but that was an eligible expense under CDBG in 2024 because we knew we'd have an eligible activity in 2025. So at this point. Previously, we had about $227,000 in allocated CDBG funds in, to be able to acquire potential properties. But we haven't had any come forward where we had interest from an end buyer where we could guarantee an eligible activity. If we were to expend CDBG funds and not have an eligible CDBG ending activity, the city would be on the hook to repay HUD from general fund.
So it's not a steady, ongoing cost that we take out every year. It's just incident by incident?
Correct.
Okay. That helps a little bit. Would increasing funding do any good in the present model? Or is it just, since we don't have the eligible properties coming down the pipeline, that it's increasing funding? Put a dent in it?
If we had de-federalized funding to do additional title work, could be beneficial if we had properties coming forward for us to evaluate. The challenge is, we really haven't had many. And when we have, we have done our due diligence to try and determine if there's an eligible activity, whether it would be in our, an advantage for us to take control of that property. Staff spent a lot of time in the two previous tax sales doing outreach to property owners ahead of the tax sale to try and get owners who were going to be subject to that tax sale to donate. We did not get much traction out of that. Every once in a while, we'd get an owner that would, you know, continue to talk with us, and then all of a sudden goes to us and goes silent. And so even that method, we weren't successful in being able to acquire properties that we thought we would have an eligible activity thereafter.
Yes, so is, so is the main thing that's holding us back from this being a successful enterprise kind of the way Cedric County interprets?
Yes and no. I mean, most of the, most of the land banks throughout the state of Kansas, the majority of their properties come from that tax sale. We're not limited to that, and we do, and that's why we were trying to get ahead of it. We've done outreach to, you know, vacant parcels. Just having, we can't force anybody to donate their property or sell it to the land bank. But in other communities, the majority of their properties do come from the tax sale, either by the taxing authority pushes all parcels that don't sell as part of the tax sale into the land bank. I don't know that that's actually an avenue we would actually want because you don't know what you're getting out of that, remnants and pieces that you can't necessarily do. Then we have other land banks in the state who use a credit bid with a taxing authority. And they're able to pick which parcels they think they can convert for an eligible use or a desired use and use a credit bid against it. It's not something that's available to us here now, and that does make it challenging.
So is pretty much all the other land banks, I know Pittsburgh has one, Wyandotte has one. Do they add the specials and the debt? They keep that with the property during the tax sales?
Well, by state law, whatever's due that current year gets repaid. Anything that was due from a previous year is wiped under the tax sale. And then anything that remains for future specials would continue to the new owner.
Okay, so it's only just the one year that it's going. Okay, has that been challenged in court to your knowledge?
Not that I am aware of. I know that Park City also has a land bank. But they've used it only in limited circumstances to deal with a development that was started during the housing bubble that failed, and they used it in that method. My understanding is they haven't really done anything else with it. There are a couple of other really small ones that we found throughout the state. But I'm not aware of anybody challenging it legally. We have been, you know, working with law and trying to evaluate whether or not there is another methodology for applying the specials related to either parcel cleanup, demolition, because those all get deployed when they happen. And then often, then they get wiped because it doesn't come to tax sale immediately, and it's considered a prior year special assessment. So we continue to try and evaluate those things. The Board of Trustees is understanding of the challenges and are doing a little bit of homework themselves around, you know, how can we keep this tool in our toolbox, but yet still not have it be too much of a drain on capacity?
Yeah, last question along those lines. Do we have any idea, I know there were some numbers bounded about, how much do we lose to the tax sales not bringing the debt alongside per year?
You know, we did a report about 18 months ago, I will dig it up and resend it to all of you if you like, where we did an analysis, we actually had to go, we were unable to get the information directly from the treasurer's office. So we actually had to go to the court and pull every filing and did a five-year look back to see at what percentage, you know, what percentage of the taxes owed were actually being collected during the sale. I can dig that up and resend it out.
Please do. And that's the taxes as a whole, not just the past year?
Correct.
Okay, I appreciate that. Yeah, I've heard a couple of numbers, and I just want to get refreshed on that. So, all right, I appreciate it.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. I plan to vote for receiving files, so. This isn't contention on any vote, but I do have a few questions. So the land bank was established in 2021. How many wins have we had since 2021, or how many projects have went through the process?
Sure, just the properties at Ninth and Ash is the only properties that have flowed through the land bank.
Just two since 2021?
Correct. And they were actually already owned by the city, purchased with CDBG nearly 20 years ago. And CDBG was used to demolish the church that was formerly on that site. And so those properties were transferred from the Office of Real Estate to the land bank because it already had CDBG regulations tied to it. And then we were able to put that out, and the council approved the sale of that property to Habitat for Humanity.
Okay, so we talked about page or slide number 79, talked about a dedicated employee. You subsequently said that a lot of the time is spent on the Affordable Housing Fund, which I think is a good use of our time. Cost-wise, I know we may not have the exact amount, but how much staff time and resources do we spend on this? So we saw the 650, but how much staff time do we divert to focus on this?
In 2024, it was very reduced. When the Board of Trustees voted to reduce it down, we were holding monthly board meetings. Staff was spending probably 15 to 20 hours a week working, trying to get in contact with owners, evaluating the target area identified by the Board of Trustees. That really scaled back in March of 2024 when the Board of Trustees voted to really reduce the activity happening with the land bank. And at that point, it was the activity to further engage with the county to look at, you know, other options because they recognized we were spinning our wheels.
Given that the county is likely to not change their policy, we've had multiple discussions, and given that we haven't added anything to the land bank since 2021, the property, have there been internal discussions in housing? I know we've briefly talked about the land bank at some of our workshops, but has there been discussion among housing of just getting rid of the land bank? Because it's not operable, I wouldn't consider the, this is not anything on housing staff, this is your situation, but I don't consider this program successful in 2021 if we haven't moved forward on the issue.
We absolutely had had that conversation about would it make the most sense to sunset the land bank? I'm a believer to try and keep whatever tools we have, if there's a way to keep them in our toolbox, because we don't know maybe an opportunity that may come. If we can keep the cost down and keeping it alive, because, you know, if someone wants to donate something in the next six months, I would have hated to have dissolved the land bank, which gave us that, the statutory authority to be able to take those programs, forgive all of those back taxes because that's what it does at running through the land bank in order to move it forward.
Mayor, if I could, if you remember, Councilmember, we did have a discussion about this during the last budget season. There are some members of the land bank board that would like us to keep this going as long as they are meeting on an infrequent basis. And I think I'd like them to work with staff so they can present you their case for keeping the tool and maybe just for the reasons identified by Sally. And we'd not allow the active staff time devoted to it until we find a project that seems to be tailor-fit for the land bank. It's similar to what we had for a number of years with our, it was our Public Building Commission. And didn't need it until we needed it, and didn't devote a lot of resources, but it did come in handy in financing some projects in Old Town. And once we got past all of that, we wanted eliminating hours because the county had a similar tool, and we could use the counties when we needed to. So anyway, long answer to your question, but I think the board would like us to, at least they'd like to make a case for keeping it open to help in the future.
I'd like to hear the case. Is there a way that maybe we can look at? The boards are only meeting three times a year right now, and that's, and they can cancel those even if they don't have business?
The way that the adjustment to the bylaws was that we'd meet three times a year. We do schedule the monthly meeting and then cancel for lack of business.
I'd be interested, and this is maybe offline conversation of how this could happen, but I mean, if they're only meeting three times, we have plenty of boards and commissions that are actively engaged, and maybe there's a way to roll this under something else so that their time is well-spent and not just coming minimum three times to be able to engage, that their time's well-spent maybe under a subsequent or type of board structure.
We, we have looked at that and have some preliminary thoughts about that.
Okay. Appreciate it.
When can we expect that conversation?
After the budget, Mayor.
Thank you, City Manager. I have a couple of questions. Sally, can you go to slide number 75? So the very first property, 3981 East Whitney, is that in Plainview? Is that correct?
Correct.
And so this specific property. I know we've heard from community wanting more housing, and so can you explain again why this one was not accepted as a property?
Sure. So when this was a potential property for the landbank to take on, we actually reached out to our affordable housing development partners to determine whether any of them would be interested in the parcel had we took ownership. It was a property, it needed to be, the, the structure on the property was to be demolished. It would be then at that point a semi-vacant parcel. Our developer partners declined, stating one unit in one neighborhood, they don't get the economies of scale. The margins are already thin to build affordable housing. And so our partners tend to want to be able to do several units in a small geographic area so that they can stage their, you know, their expenses and get economies of scale. This one-off, we had nobody interested.
And then the second location, the 23-unit apartment, can you explain this debt? Because I'm very confused. I remember we had a small conversation about this.
Yes.
And is it still operational right now?
It is still operational. The owner is still looking to offload this particular property. We're having conversations with a nonprofit right now about potentially stepping into that role to acquire the property from the current owner. The debt, this was complicated. This, the debt on this project is about $300,000 in home funds from the 1990s. What complicated it was back in the 90s, the city allocated the funding to a community housing development organization called Sancho at the time, who then granted the money to this particular owner. Sancho went defunct about 15 years ago, and the debt on the property was still owed to the, 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 not, the community development organization. Our law office was able to take that to court and get that debt transferred back to the city because it did originate as home funds, but it is $300,000 on the property. Two of those loans, it's in three loans. One was due in 2028, the other two would be at the time of transfer. This is an item that could potentially come back to you should somebody choose to buy this property, and they may ask for it to be forgiven, but at this time, it still stands as debt.
And you said that there is a nonprofit that may be stepping up?
Yes.
So I know that we're still looking for affordable housing in our community, and since this debt is now owed to the city through the now-defunct Sancho group. How would that process work of trying to forgive that loan to the nonprofit?
Sure. Really, it would be an item brought back to, a request by the potential buyer back to the council to forgive that debt. This debt is more, is beyond the 15-year HUD affordability period. It would be entirely a council decision whether or not they wanted to, you wanted to forgive that debt. And the property does need some significant renovation. It hasn't been renovated since the 1990s. So we, we do know they're likely to come back looking also for additional potentially home funds for renovations in order to keep this property viable for the years to come. It is currently entirely occupied, and it's just, it, it's seen its wear and tear, and it, it needs a renovation to keep it.
Thank you, Sally. Both of these are in District Number Three, and I think Councilmember Hoheisel wanted to say something.
No, I, I do believe we are looking at additional ways to take some properties like this. I know that, is this one, the one that we're acting on as far as we actually accepted it? Not through the landbank, but possibly, or is that the one on South Market?
This one's the one on South Market.
Okay, yeah. All right, yeah, that was just, we're, we're finding other avenues to work with this one. So, yeah. All right, thanks, Sally.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Sally, and thank you, Carmen. I see no further questions for staff. We will now open it up for public comment. I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. Since this is not associated to one district, I'm just going to add a couple of points really quickly. I look forward to having the budget conversation, and then after the budget conversation, talking about boards. I currently have some vacancies, and I'm looking for people to fill those vacancies. Among them, it's the landbank, and this conversation is very timely, as now we can see that you guys are not meeting monthly, as there's no new business. And so this is a, an opportunity for us to look at consolidating some of those boards because the staff time is so critical for other functions. And so I look forward to the conversation when the City Manager will bring it back to the council regarding consolidation of some of those boards and staff time. So with that, I will move to receive and file the 2024 Wichita Landbank Annual Report.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes, seven zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Establish the April 22nd, 2025, meeting of the Wichita City Council as a regular meeting.
There's no report?
Mayor, Council, Jennifer McGonaghy, City Attorney, this item comes before you in response to last week's direction from the bench to move the consent meeting to a regular meeting to allow for the voting on, on of a new business item. And so this item would simply set that meeting as a regular meeting. You have authority to do so. Recommend your consideration.
I will add that that recommendation should also show that the meeting will be held here at the council chambers. Any questions for staff? I see none. We'll now open it up for public comment regarding creating a regular meeting instead of a workshop meeting next week on Tuesday. I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. I will move to approve the changing of the city council meeting schedule, adding a regular meeting in place of a consent agenda workshop meeting at 9:00 AM on April 22nd, 2025, here at the council chambers, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes, seven zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
CUP 2025-5, CUP Amendment to Community Unit Plan DP 280 to Permit Warehouse Self-Service Storage as a Use and Exclude Architectural Controls on Parcel 4 and a Waiver of Supplementary Use Regulation 3 D.26Y17, generally located one-quarter mile west of North Ridge Road and within one-half mile north of West 37th Street North.
Good morning. Scott Wedle from the Planning Department. So for this case, the applicant is requesting the following amendments to the Community Unit Plan, which applies to this property. They are requesting to permit warehouse self-storage as permitted use on the particular parcel outlined in blue here. They are also requesting to exclude that same parcel from architectural controls, which are set forth in the CUP. And then third, they are requesting a waiver of the Unified Zoning Code Supplementary Use Regulation requiring an onsite resident manager for self-storage if it is in the LC zoning district. So in this case, we're dealing with a CUP, so it's a, it's another layer of zoning over the base zoning. So this item is being heard today because the DAB and the Planning Commission have different recommendations for approval, and I'll get more into depth in that in just a moment. In terms of the requests, the applicant has indicated they're requesting the amendments so they can develop the site for warehouse self-storage. They've indicated it's their intention to have them for sale as garage condos, or otherwise known as man caves. In terms of this property, the site is generally located to the north and west of Ridge Road and 37th Street. The property consists of one ownership parcel, is approximately 4.26 acres in size, zoned LC limited commercial, located within a community unit plan and is currently undeveloped. The existing community unit plan includes the subject site and multiple properties to the north and to the east. Properties to the north are zoned LC, flip to the zoning map here, are within the same CUP. Some are developed and some are undeveloped. Those that are developed are developed with medical services. Property to the east is zoned LC within the same CUP and developed with medical services. Property to the south is zoned LC in a different CUP and is in the process of being developed for multifamily. Property to the west is zoned SF5 within a different CUP and is Reserve D of the North Ridge Valley Edition and is currently in use with floodway and ponds. In terms of the staff report, the staff report provides information about architectural controls, landscaping, signage, and parking. In terms of review, on March 3rd, the District Advisory Board heard the request and recommended approval. That vote was seven to one. Their recommendation was similar to the MAPC recommendation, but with the exclusion of the architectural controls. So they recommended it to you in a way that the owner would be able to do something different than what would normally be required in terms of architecture and design. On March 13th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing for this item and recommended approval nine to two, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report. The MAPC vote denied the exclusion, recommends denial of the exclusion of the architectural controls. So in that case, if you go with the MAPC recommendation, they would have to comply with those design standards that are in the CUP. At the MAPC meeting, one member of the public, who is also a property owner within the CUP, spoke in opposition to the request, expressing opposition to the exclusion of the architectural controls, but indicated they are okay with the proposed use despite it not, despite their concerns that the use would not be what was originally planned for the development. In terms of protest, one protest petition was received against the application. The protest petition is within the calculation area and equaled less than 1% of the protest area. Since it does not exceed the state threshold of 20%, the request may be approved with a simple majority vote. In terms of recommendations, recommend the city council adopt the findings of the Planning Commission, approve the CUP amendment and waiver, adopt the resolution, authorize the necessary signatures, and instruct the city clerk to publish a resolution after approval. It simply requires four of seven votes. Alternatives include the following. You can override the Planning Commission, adopt alternative findings, and approve the CUP amendment as recommended by the DAB. That would require five of seven because it's an override. You can override the MAPC, adopt alternative findings, and deny the request. That would require five of seven because it's an override. Or as always, you can return it to the MAPC for additional consideration, which requires just a simple majority, four of seven. Terms of process, city council policy that the public hearing occurs at the Planning Commission meeting, and according to policy, city council does not typically receive public comments on zoning items. So with that, I'll take you through some of the graphic scenarios. So here's the subject site. Here's the zoning map. You can see it's zoned LC. Here's the map from Comprehensive Plan showing residential and employment mix recommended in the area. Here's the site plan that was submitted by the applicant. You can see the buildings that are outlined there, and just how the individual units would be divided up. Here's the CUP graphics, so it shows all the properties that are in this same CUP. So you can see it's properties to the east and to the north primarily. Here is the protest map and notification area. You can see the one protest just there, that blue and red property. And here are graphics that were submitted of the design. And then photos of the site and surrounding area. This is looking to the south. Looking to the north. To the south. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Scott. Questions for staff? I see none. This does not get public comment, so I will pass it to Vice Mayor Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. Scott, thanks for the presentation. Thanks for the update, everything you do. I appreciate that. When our, when our District Advisory Board heard this case, it was before the MAPC hearing. I think it would have changed their opinion on it if they'd known the MAPC hearing, what they decided. I think, honestly, I think they liked the drawings of it. They did not get to see the drawings of the buildings around it, so I am sensitive to that. And I'd also like to ask the City Manager if, I've been trying to get an answer for about a month on, there, to the east of this is a, is a new street that will service the apartments to the south. And the same owners that are concerned about this are concerned that they are being assessed specials for this street. I don't think that's fair, because that street just serves those apartments to get to this Circle Drive, which there is a light going out there. And I'd like to know how those specials were assessed and how, how it, how it was determined, what specials they were. So if we can get an answer on that, the same owners would like to know why they think they're being assessed for it, so, why that is. So with that, I will move to adopt the findings of the MAPC, approve the requested CUP amendments and waiver, adopt the resolution, authorize, authorize the necessary signatures, and instruct the city clerk to publish the, publish the resolution after approval.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes, seven zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Approve to exceed the gift limit established by the Ethics Ordinance for Councilmember Tuttle to accept travel and expenses to attend the South Carolina Spring National Conference in Columbia, South Carolina, April 22nd to 25th, for the purpose of representing the city of Wichita. The South Carolina Spring National Conference is hosted by the Community Leaders of America South Carolina Forum for the purpose of education and collaboration. The estimated gift amount for travel, hotel, and meals is $1,348, not to exceed $1,500.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. Thank you for this request. Considering this request, I just wanted to mention that the Community Leaders of America is paying for my flight, my hotel, and my meals, so there will be no cost to the city for this travel.
I move to approve the travel.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Councilmember Tuttle. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes, seven zero. Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Councilmember Appointments and Comments.
We'll begin with appointments. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to appoint Tim McCuary to Citizen Review Board. He has passed his background check. And Vanessa Christopherson to the District Advisory Board.
Motion, oh, sorry. Any other board appointments? I see none. I will move to approve those board appointments.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes, seven zero. Councilmember Comments.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say, just give everybody a little bit of a heads up. April 28th at 10:00 AM at the Advanced Learning Library, we are holding a neighborhood workshop. So neighborhood association leaders or members of the city, across the city, that'd like to come and have a conversation about ways that we can strengthen neighborhood associations and community partners. We'll have some special learning sessions. We'll be talking with each other about things that work in particular parts of the city and things we can improve on. One of the main topics will be how to bring younger people into the fold, because if you go around to the neighborhood association meetings, you definitely see one demographic coming out. So that's 10:00 AM at the Advanced Learning Library. Please go to, look it up online. I'm not exactly sure where the link is, but... I'm not exactly sure where the link is, but enroll for it. Make sure you enroll and register for it. It's free to everybody, so it should be a really informative and hopefully impactful meeting. And then the second thing, April fifteenth, don't have the man coming after you. Make sure you file your taxes today. I was actually responsible this year and got mine done about two weeks ago, so I'm not cutting the last minute like I usually do.
That's hilarious. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Councilmember Hoheisel, aren't you a part of the man now as an elected official?
I'm taking down the man from inside.
I just wanted to highlight misinformation is something that's really important to me, and I was privately asked by email to issue an apology to someone who spoke today who didn't understand my correction. So one of our public speakers said we have two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar toilets, specifically a toilet. So I look at words being used. I am not aware of the city of Wichita ever paying two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for a toilet. We do have public bathrooms that cost about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars with installation costs. That was why I made the correction. We do not pay two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for toilets. So I hope the gentleman who spoke earlier, who sent the email, can see the clarification as he indicated we paid that much for a toilet. That is in fact not true. We do have two public restrooms that include a toilet, hand washing station, actually stays warm in the winter down to thirty degrees, has a lot of other features to it, but that is what I was referring to. That is accurate, and when staff was asked, they did refer to restrooms and not toilets. So that was my comments. Happy to always break down my comments for anyone who asks. Thank you.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to invite and encourage anyone to join me for the river cleanup on Saturday from eight to noon.
I'll be there.
Oh, cool. We're meeting at the Red Pedestrian Bridge. I have all the details on my Facebook pages, so please check that out. And then I also wanted to take a second to thank the fire department. I was about a block away when the fire happened next to the Orpheum, and it was terrifying. It seemed like every firefighter in town showed up with the quickness and, and got all of that taken care of, so very impressive. Just wanted to say thank you and I'm glad that the surrounding buildings are, are okay.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. And I misspoke. I'm sorry, Councilmember Ballard. I'm going to be at the downtown cleanup on Saturday. There's so many cleanups, which is all good, and it's so good to see so many people volunteering. I just wanted to highlight that this Saturday, for I think the third or fourth year in a row, I will be the emcee at the 2025 Week of the Young Child Impact Awards, which brings together several hundred childcare providers, and we get to honor and celebrate them as entrepreneurs that they are and small business owners. If it were not for childcare providers in our community, people couldn't go to work and it would have a grave impact on our economy. So childcare providers help build our workforce within the city, so it's my pleasure and honor to be their advocate, and I'm happy to celebrate them with them on Saturday.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Since we brought up cleanups, I have one as well on Saturday at one o'clock at Lincoln Park. We're going to get the park ready for an Easter egg hunt on Sunday, so we want to make sure that it's looking pretty good for the kiddos out there. So anybody out there in the district that wants to come over or outside the district, we'll be out there at one o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you. I will just add a quick comment. Thank you to everyone who attended Open Streets ICT this past weekend at the WSU and Shakur Neighborhood Area on Sunday in District Number One, Councilmember Johnson's district. There are two more opportunities for Open Streets ICT, so mark your calendars, for the Nomar, one which will be held Sunday, May fourth, twelve to four PM, and the last one, which is Open Streets ICT Douglas. It will be held on Sunday, September twenty-eighth, from noon to five PM. And we cannot adjourn. I am so sorry.
Mayor, before you make your motion, I do apologize. There's a typo on the motion. When you read the motion, read number one, disregard item two on the front page, and read number two in the second.
Thank you very much. So I will read this executive session. I move that the city council recess into executive session for thirty minutes to receive information on several lawsuits pursuant to KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B two for legal consultation with the city attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pending litigation, legal advice.
Second.
Hold on. The executive session is required to protect attorney-client privilege and the public interest. The executive session will begin at twelve fifty AM, oh, sorry, eleven fifty AM, and will conclude at twelve twenty PM, and will resume the city council meeting inside the chambers.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven-zero. We will return at twelve twenty PM.